Oh, gosh. Well, we'll keep it kind of informal, but I guess legally I do need to call it to order, which I am doing right now, is calling this to order. What I would like for us to do is I'm going to turn it over to our manager, and we're going to go page by page through this budget. And let's keep it where if you've got a question, just throw them out here on the table. We've got all day as far as I'm concerned, so let's really beat this one. Yeah, you do, too.
Have to be somewhere, too.
Huh?
Have to be somewhere, too.
What time?
Two, button two.
Well, I'll get you out of here in a quarter till.
We in Oregon, so we don't have to be late.
Yeah, Bob will be out Bob.
Okay. Only one thing I wanted to remind you all, we do have the region AV on Tuesday night at the Boiler Room for all of you, between 2:00 and 10:00. And I believe that's about the only thing I've got for this morning, other than the budget. So, let's see, the Transportation Advisory Committee meets at 5:30, and I think, or no, it's 5 o'clock.
It's 5:00, and their region is 6:00.
It's 6:00. And given the good turnaround, I have a good chance to meet a bunch of people, so y'all can make it pretty fun.
Should I come in my workout clothes?
Absolutely, yeah. They come in everything, so. Matter of fact, manager? All right, let's.
Sorry about that.
Way to start it.
Thought my face made me run down for a minute.
Wake me up.
All right, well, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present this to you. Kind of where I'd like to go in the next couple hours while we're here, I'd like to start and just take a few minutes to actually read the manager's message that Warren left behind for us. I think by doing this, it will kind of give us an overview of where we're going today by looking at the budget, and where we're going in the upcoming fiscal year, some things we do need to address. So if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to go through this with you. The town of Franklin remains in sound financial condition with a stable fund balance and a current ad valorem tax rate of 25 cents per $100. The town's experiencing very slow growth in our revenue sources, especially sales tax, interest on investments, and water and sewer revenues. The town should remain diligent and maintain spending within budgeted amounts and carefully consider any unanticipated expenditures during the fiscal year. Your debt service. All debt payments are fully budgeted as required by law. The town has completed the sewer plant renovation, and the additional debt service for this project is included within the budget. Personnel. This budget calls for a 1% one-time payment based on salary and lieu of a cost of living adjustment for all positions. The budget anticipates the retirement of the current IT director in July, allowing the planner to assume some routine daily duties, and contracting other more advanced network services as needed, eliminating one full-time position. The budget also anticipates the retirement of the current Main Street program director in August, with those duties being split between a part-time festival and event coordinator and a contractual obligated firm or individual for the Main Street duties. One entry-level staff position will be funded within the current fire department budget with no overall increase in the fire budget. Although other departments requested additional personnel, funding was not available without reallocating funds from other areas. Employee benefits will remain unchanged. Operating capital outline. The police department will be replacing one patrol vehicle with over 100,000 miles. Public Works replacing a half-time pickup truck. Special projects. Funds are budgeted for upgrades to the gazebo area at the town square for a stream restoration project to be completed at Memorial Park, and to complete a job classification and salary study of all town employees. By department. Water and sewer. Funds are budgeted for five small water and sewer replacement projects. Funds are budgeted for cleaning the drainage basin at the water plant. Police department. Bulletproof vests that are nearing expiration will be replaced. Funds were increased for fuel costs and increased vehicle maintenance. Funds were also allocated for a K-9 program. Fire department. Replacement of uniforms and protective gear. The 10-year strategic plan continues. Water and sewer rates. The Board of Alderman completed a two-year water and sewer rate increase last fiscal year. Based on current estimates, water and sewer revenues combined are estimated to be approximately $300,000 lower than expected this year. So changes have been initiated within the water and sewer budget to maintain this fund. A detailed water rate study will be completed by June 2014, and the town should review the study with due diligence, anticipating a future water treatment plant expansion, as well as funding a current water and sewer infrastructure projects. The conclusion. This budget for 2013-2014 is balanced in accordance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, and continues to provide existing services while meeting the governing board's priorities and policies. The general fund balance is reduced by $242,000, but a modest tax increase is recommended to adjust ad valorem tax rate to 26 cents per $100 evaluation. This will allow a modest transfer from undesignedated funds to be used for balancing the budget while maintaining a healthy and sustainable fiscal future for the town while still accomplishing several projects. The service fee for fire services is recommended to remain at the current funding level of 4 cents per $100 evaluation. Revenue from the service fee will cover all operating expenses with the only transfer from the fire budget, fire fund balance utilized for apparatus lease payments. Until the detailed rate study is completed and analyzed, it is recommended that sewer and water rates remain unchanged. Although revenues are projected to be approximately $300,000 lower than anticipated, adjustments have been made within the budget to compensate for the revenue loss with no increase in water and sewer rates this year, and a modest transfer from the water and sewer fund balance. That includes the budget, or concludes the budget message. What I would like to kind of start with, if you'll notice what I've passed out to each of you at your seats, is I wanted to kind of talk about this proposed tax increase. To kind of show you what this would do, because I think this is something we need to take into consideration as we move through the budget process today. If you look on your assessed value, I broke it down, an assessed value of $25,000 that goes from $25,000, $50,000, $75,000, $100,000, $200,000, $300,000, $400,000, $500,000, and $1 million. If you were to institute a 1% or a penny increase, you take your tax rate from 25 cents to 26 cents per 100. On a $25,000 assessed value of property, your tax bill for one year would be $65. So the question to note is how is that different from the current year in which we're in? The current year, if you have a piece of property that's valued at $25,000, at the 25 cent per 100, you pay a tax bill of $62.50. So an increase of one penny, the difference would be you'd be paying $2.50 more a year on your property tax. I did do, I looked at some of the demographics within the town of Franklin. Your average property hits around $50,000 up to around $300,000. So your average taxpayer, if you did institute this penny increase, would see anywhere from a $5 up to around a $30 increase in their tax bill. The most expensive, a million-dollar piece of property would only see $100 in addition to their tax bill. So I just kind of wanted to bring you guys aware of what a penny would do to someone's property, and what rate we're talking about when we look at how much it's going to affect them. The next thing I'd like to look at, and we can come back to this, if you'll flip the page, I also wanted to look at the millage rate over the years. If you will notice, the last time, this was fascinating to me, in 1969, you were at $1.30. Over the years, it fluctuates. The last time the town of Franklin raised property taxes was in 2001. It went from 33 cents in 2000 up to 36 cents in 2001, so you saw a 3% increase. Now, from 2001 to 2007, it decreased. From 2007 to present, the town of Franklin has held strong at 25 cents on their tax I thought this would just be kind of a good tool, I'm a visual learner, just to kind of give the board an idea of what a penny could do for us, and where we've been over the years. If I have calculated correctly, if you went up one penny, you're going to generate around 60 and into consideration, a 95% collection rate. Any questions? We can start, I might entertain any questions that the board may have about the tax, thoughts, feelings.
I have one, one thing that I'm going to mention after we go through the budget.
Okay, all right.
And it involves the tax rate.
Anything else?
Anybody?
I think it's very easy.
Somebody's got to ask some questions. We're going to.
Well, about this.
So we're not wanting to do it, now we're wanting to do it?
Well, whatever.
I've already asked them, but I figured everybody else.
Yeah, the game plan is sort of go through the budget page by page, rather than just saying, here it is.
I understand about the tax increase, but anybody had feelings about the tax increase?
Yeah, I think that that's something that won't just, let's go through the budget, and then let's talk about the tax increase, because I think we can justify, more than justify, actually.
All right, well, I wanted to start there, and then if you guys want to just get at the large package of the budget, we'll kind of go page by page. I thought this would be a good starting point. I can just kind of give you guys a little bit detailed overview of where we're going this upcoming year. Of course, after the message, that is your budget ordinance, which is required by law. Now, Exhibit A. Town of Franklin, the budget for a year ending in June, would be for June 30 of 2015. What you're basically looking at, the total anticipated revenue for your general fund, and Janet, please correct me if I misspeak on anything as far as this. Looks like your total anticipated revenue is $3,153,500. For your fire department fund, you're looking at around $500,000. Your enterprise fund, $3,373,000, which gives you a total of $7,26,500. And then you can break it down, your fund balance appropriated for general fund, $620,000. Fund balance appropriated for the fire department fund, $180,500. Fund balance appropriate, the total would be $800,500. You retain earnings that were appropriated. You've got $206,500 in your enterprise fund. So a total budget for the general fund is $3,773,500. Total budget for your fire department fund is $680,500. Your total budget for your enterprise fund is $3,000, excuse me, $3,579,500, for a total of $8,33,500. Any questions on this page?
Let's say we have a magnificent year, and tourism goes up, and properties start selling, and revenues start coming in. Does that just go into, where would the additional revenue go in?
Would that would go in your general, correct?
You've got to get ahead $170,000 before you even break even. Say you're taking $170,000 to balance your budget, so unless you get over that, you're not even breaking even.
So that you go to repay that, and then?
Say unless you, unless your revenues, unless you get $170,000 more revenues than expenses, you're not even broke even yet.
Yeah, okay.
Because you're not really supposed to take your fund balance to balance. That's a big no-no.
Anything else on this page?
Did that explain what you're on, Barbara?
Yes, thanks.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Okay, general fund, detailed budgets of revenues and your sources. Okay, if you'll notice under the ad valorem taxes, you will see the current year, which is budgeted $1,663,500. That is an increase from last year, and that is with the assumption of the one penny increase. Another thing to note, under other taxes, your privilege licenses is down by $65,000. One factor into this is the video gaming devices, those, as we know, the state, that's kind of in limbo, one minute we have them, one minute we don't. So that, that's fluctuated this year. Revenue was anticipated, but yet came, did not come through. Another thing to note on?
You had something about that.
Certainly.
The privileges license may be completely gone because the state is trying to pass the law now, and either to do away with it completely, or limit it to a flat fee. In really big cities, that would cost millions of dollars. So I'm not sure if it's going to get passed or not, but one of their proposals is to do like $100 for each business, which ours probably would be, you know, probably get that to sign, because we do about 400, I think it's about 400 vendors or whatever you want to call businesses. So we might come out okay, but if they do away with it completely, say you'd be losing that revenue.
I know that I was really upset about that, too, until the manager explained to me that a small town will actually come out ahead if the legislature goes with the flat $100.
Right, but then you're going to have all the compliance, because see, some people have been paying $25 a year, and then you're going to have people like Walmart paying $100, and like your?
That's right, and we've also got businesses that are paying $2.50.
Which doesn't even account for the?
But you're not saying that you're going to have?
Bring it on for your stamp.
We can't even afford to send them the tax bill, it's $2.50.
But see what's going to happen, too, when you go to that flat fee, because I'm not saying they won't pay it, but somebody like a Walmart, a Ballo's, big stores will be paying the same, and so. And I know $100, I mean, I'm not going to break anybody, but that's the proposal, I'm not sure if the other?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't go through.
Because somehow he's got the idea that that's fair. The big licenses like Charlotte and stuff, they show on those tables that that lose, they really lose lots of money.
The way I've looked at that is you do take your larger cities like Charlotte, who they rely on your bigger box, your bigger industries, who are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars, where in our case, a smaller community, I almost see us benefiting from this. It is a double-edged sword, because your mom and pops would pay more, but in this particular case, it's, you know, you do have your average privilege license, 25 to 50 bucks, you have some people who are still paying $2.50. We are not at a place where we rely heavily on your larger industries, because we have your Walmart, your Lowe's, your Bilo, your Ingles, where Charlotte probably has 50 more of those, where in my personal opinion, I think we would come out ahead if this did happen, because you're going to see what we rely, you're going to get more.
But another thing you might point out, all these, you're talking about that $2.50 fee, that's been set by the state. The towns, when you do a privilege license, all of these fees, you have no choice but to charge them $2.50. That's state regulated.
Like that means?
Even if you want to charge more. See, that's what I'm saying, the state's got control of all of these licenses.
Oh, yes.
As long as some of us are low.
That's why we'll have to just wait until?
And then a lot of things are exempt.
Yeah.
But they were talking about this as a cap, so if our rates were not up there, you know, you'd have to raise the rates in order to give them?
Yeah, you'd have to change your ordinance.
Get managed at that.
Well, let's think about it, we'll send a letter to Jim Davis how we feel about it, after we analyze it a little more. I know how the league feels about it.
Also, one other thing to note, under your unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, your telecommunications sales tax, there it's down by $20,000 this year. Do you, Janet, do you know any explanation for that?
It's based on what the state formally does, and now it's, what they do is collect this tax, and then divide it out to us. It's just like, sales tax has not increased. At one time, sales tax increased every year, but you know, the economy's down, especially in this area, and the economy really affects these type of revenues. And I mean, I don't really know why it's down, but it looks like it's going to be down for the past year, so that's one reason we decreased it.
What goes into freight cost tax?
It's like more left, of course.
Okay, fine.
It's like your power.
All right, fair.
But there are a lot of people in the communication field, you know, that are dropping their home phones?
Yeah, that's what, you're right.
Look at the phone.
The phones would affect it, yes.
That's true.
Because this is like for the bomb companies and stuff, you're right, that's probably part of the decrease.
And then your restricted intergovernmental revenue, your power bill at $120,000, the same as last year. Tourism Development Authority, $100,000, the same as last year. And the further we get into this budget, it'll break it down a little bit further. Okay, on Schedule 1, page 2, we are hopefully anticipating a slight increase in your zoning permits from the previous year. The current year that we're in, 2013-2014, we budgeted $2,500. This year, we're anticipating a slight increase, and we're doing around $4,000. Other sources, the only slight, the administration re- from the previous year of $250,000 down to $105,000. And then the total anticipated revenue, your fund balance appropriated for 2014-2015 is predicted to be $170,000, from the previous year of $177,000. And a fund balance appropriated, your power bill for 2014-2015 is $450,000 compared to last year, or this current year of 2013-2014, which is $550,000. Any questions on that page? All right. The fun part, the detailed part, okay. General government, governing board. One thing to notice in there that I wanted to point out, your nonprofit organizations, that is what the town has done in the past where we do our funding pool. You have the same amount budgeted that you did last year for $40,000. That's when we open it up in July, and they can come and fill out the funding, a grant request, and then that will come before the town board, probably at your September meeting. So it's the same as last year. Another thing to note is your economic development, the $7,000, that is in 2013, when the town partnered with the county for Franklin Tubular. That is your predictive payment for this year, it's your $7,000. Your Franklin Area Chamber of Commerce, $4,000. There's $2,000 for your fireworks, and $2,000 for your membership dues. And then Pickin' on the Square is the same as last year as well, you're at $28,500. And then the professional services, the $31,500, that's the audit, correct, Janet?
Yes, but I think this $4,000 for fireworks.
Let's see, now, I don't know, because I think it's?
Because I think the fees is another thing. The fact that these are prescription, I think this $4,000 for fireworks.
Okay.
I'm very sure.
The Pickin' on the Square, do we get any revenues from vendors, the people that make money off of?
You do, they have to, they come in once a year with our tax collectors, also does our privilege license, and they're assigned a vendor application. And there is a fee for that.
I still think about, hey, the donations.
Well, I had a question.
Yes.
When I said with her, I had a question, too, is, I know it's, there's a lot of people that go to it during the year, a lot of it's tourists that go into it. I don't know of a lot of locals that go to Pickin' on the Square. But my concern was, what's the benefit of it? Because I hear a lot of our downtown merchants aren't getting any benefit, they don't. When they have tried to stay open, they're not getting anyone coming in. So I guess my biggest question was, what is the main benefit for Pickin' on the Square? And do we know whether it is helping bring more tourism, to help businesses, and all that?
I can answer the theory, anyway, is that people come to some fun event in town, and walk around, and look in the windows, and they like, they enjoy it, so they'll come back to the town and shop later. And that's the theory behind any of the festivals, is just to associate Franklin as a fun, exciting place in people's minds, and they'll come back. So you may not have a benefit that day or that not, but you would have?
I think originally, too, our, like, so many people would say, they came to Franklin, and 8 o'clock, everything was shut down, and they're here, and they had to just go to their hotel room. So they had, you know, it's like, okay, I get to see a little of what goes on in the little small town. You know, like you say, but big benefit, but I think some people come, I've heard people leave and say, oh, that was so cute. And of course, I'm just like Patty, I've heard the other ones say, okay, we do something different.
Kind of generation issue?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So, I mean, down the road, it would, to me, it would be good to look at other ways of bringing different demographics, different generations.
Different mix of music.
Yes, different mix of music.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Something that's going to touch on everyone, and not just a certain group.
All right, let me step on a sacred cow here, just so.
Whoops, you've never done that before, but?
Well, your age, what difference does it matter? But I'm a little concerned, out of the $4,000 we give to the Chamber of Commerce, $2,000 of that goes to fireworks shows.
We think, yeah.
We think.
Janet said she thought it was $4,000. Janet said she thought it was $4,000 goes to fireworks.
To me, when we've got nonprofits and all that are hurting like that, it looks to me like the fireworks, the fireworks, really, if you're not right at the park, you can't even see it.
Do you ever sit, do you ever go? The amount of people who come from out of town everywhere, it's huge.
I know, I know.
Everybody looks for fireworks.
But what I'm getting at is, I would think that the chamber could fund that from private funds.
I think they've tried. You ever watch even people not, they dive right by and don't even leave donations at the corner.
I wonder, I'm sure the $4,000 is the total.
Oh, no, I think the county gives.
In the TDC as well.
The county gives as well.
And TDC, everybody gives, I think.
Well, anyhow, for 30-minute show, I just wanted to mention?
Because it's the 4th of July, Bob.
I know, it's the 4th of July.
I am the biggest Roboff for it, Bob.
Just the grand finale of every play.
I'm there at 5:00, and don't leave until it's over.
I love, I watch it from my window.
You can be one of the private winners.
I'll give a big, $5, I got $5.
A lot of people go to both that rooms.
Yeah, those both.
In advance, right there. And it really helps a lot, those restaurants and all through there.
Everything's jam.
They've got a lot up to it.
A lot of them are coming to all of the 4th of July things besides the fireworks, too.
The fireworks are just kind of grand finale, just to get them there for everybody else.
And that Lions Club makes good money.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're barbecue.
Yeah.
Before.
Okay.
Any other things on this page?
That's all I have.
All right, moving on. Your administration. One thing that you will note that's different than the previous year is your pay plan implementation. And this was hit on briefly in the budget message. One thing that Warren and I have discussed, since I assumed the responsibilities of the human resource officer, was looking at the league and certain avenues that they would offer to come in here and do a proper pay scale, a pay study, and a pay implementation process for the town of Franklin. What would happen from where I've reached out with is we would, you would contract with the league, and then the league then in turn contracts through a group called MAPS. MAPS would come in here for 90 days, if everything went smoothly, it may be a little bit longer, and do a thorough pay study and pay implementation schedule.
I think it's way past.
Anything?
Sure, absolutely. You know, if you let it go too long, then it ends up being a major issue.
Anything else?
Okay, moving on then.
Next is the finance. That is basically a mirror image as last year. Your group insurance, which with all the things, all of the departments in the budget did slightly increase. Any questions on this one? Okay, all right. Schedule 2, page 4, this is billing and collections. It was actually decreased slightly this year, we were able to cut back in your training. Any questions on this one? I know, I like that, I mean, we're going to make some.
Wait, just wait though.
The meat's coming, it's coming. Okay, Schedule 2, page 5, this is your legal and elections. This is the town attorney. We were able to decrease this by $10,000, just by really kind of being cautious and making sure it was an absolute necessity before an employee picked up the phone to call the attorney. So we were able to decrease that by $10,000. Of course, you'll notice Macon County, we had to have the $5,000 last year, that was because for them to do their elections, so we did not have to have this this year, since this is not election for the town of Franklin. Anything on this one? Okay, all right. Schedule 2, page 6, your facilities. One thing to note on this one, under your insurance and bond, it did increase from last year, and this, what is housed in this line item, is this is your property insurance, and we did see an increase from that. Anything on this page? All right. Okay, Schedule 2, page 7. This is your IT. As I noted, current IT director is looking to retire July 1 of 2014. As I noted, current IT Director is looking to retire July the first of twenty-four, or twenty-fourteen. There is money set aside under other services at the will of the Board throughout the year if they would like to contract this back. The current IT Director has expressed an interest in possibly contracting that back, so if it is the will of the Board in upcoming months, if you do approve this budget, there's money in there to do that. Anything else on this? Good, all right. Schedule two, page eight, Planning and Economic Development. One thing to note is there is, there's a couple, you've got your planning board, your Board of Adjustment, and your town planner that's figured into your salary and wages. This is where your planning board and Board of Adjustment are in at as well. You will see an increase in the training from the previous year because part of the requirement for the land use administrator, your town planner, is for them to obtain a CZO, Certified Zoning Official Certificate. So it was budgeted for that individual to attend that this year. Any questions on this one?
Big increase in group insurance?
Yes.
Single to family. I was amazed by how much the pay of group insurance is.
That's one of the questions I brought up to Summer when I met with her, was on insurance, do we just go with the same insurance company every year, or are we bidding, bidding it out and getting other quotes from various ones, whether it be local? I'm getting to the running on, if we can keep it local and do so. And my understanding is we go directly through Blue Cross?
Yes.
We don't go through any of our local vendors. I have worked with local insurance companies in the past, and it's always been nice to just be able to pick up the phone, they come in and we meet with you and your employees every year, so I didn't know if that was something that we've looked at in the past, you know, I'm new, so I don't know.
We have always, and Janet, you may want to speak on this as well, we always, we have used directly through Blue Cross, Bushill, but something her and I have discussed, as you did see, there is a significant increase in your family coverage. This is something that her and I have agreed to look at this upcoming for the next budget year to see what other avenues are out there for us, because that is a rather steep increase.
Does the league offer any kind of-
The league, I think, actually is higher than Blue Cross. See, we're a small group, so you get into the small group. And then, and we have tried to bid it out in the past, and usually when we bid Blue Cross, and I'm not, it was usually cheaper, and at one time, the league didn't have a network out here in this area. The league, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, the league is the league insurance that we have worked to come through, but they offer health insurance. But now, one time, and it's been a few years back, it was actually higher, and it wasn't as good of benefits. But we have a representative that I can email and talk to. And last year, and I don't know, I don't, you and Patty that probably don't know, but we did a healthy thing, and all the employees participated, and we actually got a discount this year. It went up about ten percent, which according to the clerk's net, some people went up about thirty-three percent to thirty-five. But the reason for part of this is Obamacare. See, all these new regulations is coming down, and you have to, I understand is there's all these fees that's hidden now. And I'm not, I'm not saying right or wrong, but, because I've been to several meetings with the league, you know, they have these meetings, and they've talked about how hard it is to keep the costs down. They're with med cost now. But at one time, and I've not seen the rates, well, I think they went up this year, I'm pretty sure they did, too. And then they had something out, I read, that some groups, they didn't go up as much, but I think they always look at your experience. But we're planning to do this wellness again. And I think the wellness, I wasn't really a big opponent of it, but actually, it's really nice because you can get on the computer and look at it, it'll tell you some areas. And we had a lot of, I think a lot of people were really interested, so we're gonna do a wellness thing. Get your flu shots, you can, we had like classes.
Somebody was asking me the other day, do we still have a close sponsorship, as the people said?
Yes. Yes, we still have one. Like, George, right now, we pay hundred dollar membership, and then anybody who wants to join, it saves them, what is it, that fee you have to pay?
They weigh down.
That membership's a hundred and fifty dollars.
And I think we have a few people that goes over there.
Yeah, I see some.
Employee, we pay a hundred percent of them.
Yes.
Are we still paying a hundred percent of family?
No.
Is it, is it, they're contributing some?
They have to contribute some. And then it went up this year, and then Warren said he just hated, because since somebody's getting a raise, he had to make a pay the difference. But we probably do need to look at it in the future, maybe to quit supplementing families. Because I understand is too, that you have to offer health insurance to your employee and children, but with Obamacare, and I'm not sure how this is gonna work, spouses, they can get that through there. I mean, that may be something I have to look at. Because everywhere you go to all these meetings, a lot of places is really looking at insurance, insurance is very high for everybody. And in fact, they try to, if you smoke, they're supposed to make you pay more, and that kind of stuff. But really, I don't think that many employees at the town smoke, so I'm not sure that saves much. But you, you know, you sort of penalize them for their bad habits, I guess. Yeah, so. Anybody have any more questions?
Anything else? Okay. All right. Schedule two, page nine, this is your Tourism Development Authority, and this is basically just a wash. They're anticipating a hundred thousand, we're anticipating a hundred thousand this year, you're just gonna back out the door. Anything on this one? Okay. Schedule two, page ten, the Main Street. Wanted to bring up a couple of points that we discussed in our budget message, was if you'll notice, currently under salary and wages, we are anticipating the upcoming retirement of our Main Street Director. She has expressed an interest wanting to be part-time, which you would consider that to be someone who just focused on your festivals and events, so she'd be a festivals and events coordinator. She would have to work less than a thousand hours per calendar year to be considered part-time as well. Now, the second equation to that is you're under other services. There is eighteen thousand, five hundred set aside, if you'll notice, there's a grand total of twenty-two thousand to contract out with an individual or organization to do the Main Street portion of that. Also, one other thing to note in that twenty-two thousand, we are in desperate need of storage. So there's thirty-five hundred dollars from that twenty-two thousand to do storage units. As you know, come July first, we will be moving out of, before then, we'll be completely out of the Old Town Hall, so we've got, have somewhere to put some of the decorations and other equipment that we have in there. Any questions on this one? Okay. All right. Schedule two, page eleven, this is your Traffic and Event Services. Again, this is a part-time possession. The only, there was a slight increase just from last year, the five hundred dollars for the unemployment insurance.
We can divide zero percent, now we got the pay one percent.
All right. Schedule two, page twelve, Non-Departmental. This is your separation pay for the, for the retired police officers, you currently have three that fall within this category. Any questions on this one?
There's no choice about that.
No, not this one, no, there's, there's no choice.
Not at all.
Okay.
They deserve it.
Schedule two, page thirteen, I wanted to kind of talk, again, honing some points that were brought up earlier. One thing to note is, under your Capital Outlay Equipment, the police chief had actually requested three cars. There was only enough money in the budget for one. However, after speaking with the police chief, I do feel that there is a need for a second vehicle. So one, there's two options you really have at this point, if the Board is willing to go for the second vehicle. You could either look at funding in full a second vehicle, or maybe the potential of looking at a lease purchase, where you would use your thirty-six thousand as your lease purchase payment for maybe two vehicles. So that's something we do need to kind of talk about and see where you want to go with that, if the Board is interested in moving forward to get that second vehicle for this department.
Do we plan on surplus in every year?
We do. The two, the one that is calculated in this budget is a two thousand five, and I've got some information on it, it's a Ford Explorer that has, it's two thousand five Ford Explorer with a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two miles on it. If you figure in the one point five multiplier for the idle time, you're really looking at a vehicle that probably has around two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred, or excuse me, two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight miles on it. This vehicle has given several problems in the past year, transmission, engine problems. So this is the one that you'd actually see for the thirty-six thousand in the budget. The second vehicle that they're looking at, that they would like to surplus, is the two thousand six Ford Crown Victoria. It has a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine miles. Again, if you calculate the one point five multiplier in there for your idle time, you have a vehicle that roughly has around a hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three miles.
If we surplus that, could we put it somewhere on Harrison Avenue to slow traffic down?
You see the sign up here? He's gone moving around, David's moving that sign all over town.
That slowed a lot of traffic down on Main Street.
Black people didn't break.
Well, you would think that we replace two of those vehicles, our vehicle maintenance, we would have some money in that vehicle maintenance. And that vehicle maintenance is a high because we've got some new vehicles. I mean, you don't buy transmissions, even thirty-five hundred pieces, plus the maintenance on some vehicles, so.
I keep seeing the papers that we were chasing someone in and trying to-
Well, no.
The cars stalled and paid, not that, I mean, yeah.
Well, one of those vehicles should be still under warranty. The newer ones-
Oh, yeah, the newer ones, absolutely.
And supposed to be more fuel efficient, so I kind of question if we replace two of them, the extra ten thousand dollars that was budgeted for vehicle maintenance.
What that hose for that's for gas?
Did it?
Yeah, that's gas, that should, that should gas.
Just take some gases.
Oil changes and stuff.
Feel like that's what I'm saying.
Not just major repairs, it's more like routine maintenance, it's not like major. And they have probably about twenty vehicles. So when you look at it that way, there's probably not a lot.
And of the twenty, from what I've discussed with the police chief, we've got about eight new vehicles coming.
With the count of two new, and there's no new positions in the special case.
Yes.
But I think most of the ones that's, not being used, has already been sold now. Because we did that about a year or two ago. All the vehicles that just sat around.
The ones we replaced these with.
Yeah, they've been, a year, they just get maybe, I was kind of like-
Couple thousand.
Yeah, maybe a thousand or two of those, so you jump that maybe four.
Is there any negative to a lease purchase? Is there any one negative to a lease purchase?
Working through.
Working through the requirements.
Lender, having to deal with a lender.
Well, we started able to lease purchase on our license, once it ended up having to buy all these issues.
The silver license.
Yeah.
But the two proposals in this one-
I'm gonna get it separated at this point.
The two proposals in this is for a new Ford Explorer, to replace the Ford Explorer, and then if you did want to go the second vehicle, it would be Ford Tourist.
We used to go through Ford Lease and do it pretty easily, but now I'm not sure if that changed your policy or not, that's been several years ago.
That's something where the step will kick, I guess.
The bar was right, when we tried to buy the Chevrolet in lease purchase, nobody would give us a lease. And now, we used to go through Ford Lease in Michigan, and you just fill out two or three packages, you know what I'm saying? And then they would do it like three to four years for you.
Well, just, at this point, if we're thinking about that, I'd like for Summer to be able to go out and check. I mean, that's, it might be a, it might be a while. And I think we need to question that for a moment.
If we can get these, then maybe we've got like, a couple of other things.
Yeah, we're both, yeah.
So do we do that now, or we do that at the end of this meeting?
Give her permission to go out there and look?
Do it.
No, I need to, what, do it now? One of the things-
Do it.
Done.
One of the things we may want to look at is, just the cost of the police cars on tip of the iceberg, computers, lights, sirens, radios and all. Though, there are a couple of companies that will sell you a car completely out, did they mention that?
No, he didn't. He had actually broken it down with the proposal that he'd gotten from Ford, it would be a separate package. Right.
But I think that thirty-six thousand probably did quit.
It is.
Yeah.
That's why it looks like a car costs so much, the car.
Oh, yeah.
The equipment is out.
The equipment.
That's with the police passenger.
New or old? Is the equipment new or old? Is the equipment the same stage as the-
Your lights and all can't be transferred, because they keep changing every year. Your radios probably can.
Or mount, sitting there approved of vehicles, so they gotta be signed for that.
Right, yeah. There's no easy way out.
Right.
Unlike a fire truck.
So what I'll do is, I'll move forward and see if we can obtain a lease purchase for two vehicles, if we can. The other thing I wanted to note in here that was also mentioned in the budget message was, under your Supplies, there's twenty-nine thousand dollars, and in that, there is thirty, right at thirty-eight hundred set aside for a K-9. This is something the Board should consider, you know, to me, you really have one of two options, you can, you know, thirty, thirty-eight hundred isn't gonna get you too far with a K-9. You could scrap the idea of the K-9 altogether. However, if there is, feels like there is a need for a K-9 unit, my recommendation would be that you looked maybe at a puppy, and when I say puppy, you know, a, a dog that's six to seven weeks old, that we could actually put through the proper training requirements. So just kind of direct me how you would like to go there. You can either eliminate that and put that money back, they could use that for supplies for radios, tasers, or we can pursue the K-9 unit.
I'd actually like to actually pursue the K-9 unit, and that money would get us, would get us started with. And, but it wouldn't be ready, you know, through this budget year, that's, that's just, it's gonna take time, but we're not spending that much this year on it, but the next year we get it certified, and the training, the sales with the officers, so this is, this is K-9 drug.
We certainly have that problem in town.
And you, and I think we send a message to, to the town that we're being proactive on drugs in the area. And we do, our officers do use, do have a lot of idle time that is sitting waiting to get a K-9 unit. In other words, once they stop someone, they're, they're not available to answer any other calls, so that car is sitting there running, and they're not available for calls.
Is there some way to get that?
So the county comes in.
What that actual cost is to us, or has been in the past of the idle time? Is there some, some way to get a figure on how much that actually costs in terms of idle time?
I've kind of looked forward about this K-9. County's got four of them.
And we're paying county taxes.
And I guess the one thing that I, that I will say is, if the Board decides that they really want to go through with that, I'm, I'm gonna ask that we do what Summer suggests. The dog that they have available now is about five years old. We don't, we don't need to start there.
A five-year-old big dog isn't gonna be around long.
Yeah, that's, it wouldn't happen a year, once, this train wouldn't happen about a year.
Of service, yeah. So if we're gonna do it, we need to, we need to get a put. But also, Ward needs to consider that if you have a handler, then that handler has to be paid for taking care of the dog, which does not mean working at the police department, but he's, he's paid in the regulations, half hour or an hour every day, because he's, he's looking after the dog, so that has nothing to do with the work time, as far as the police department is concerned. So there's a lot of, because his, the, the shifts that they work now, he couldn't work the shift like they work tonight, because he'd have to come in thirty minutes later and leave thirty minutes sooner. So you've got all these different things, and so there's a lot of cost that's gonna be involved with this, that's gonna be in, that you're, I mean, it'll eventually come out, but, but until you get right in the middle of it, you're really not gonna know a hundred percent of what you're looking at. So anyway, I'm just kind of a little pessimistic about this.
Yeah, I've, I've had to deal with this before too, and there's a couple of other things I'd like to throw out. We're gonna have to build a kennel. They have to have a concrete run. And the dogs that I have, you can't go down to Engle, I mean, that I dealt with, you can't go down to Ingalls and get gravy trained. Has to be special blend, you get it, but I'm talking about-
It's expensive as all day.
Why do they have to have something other than-
Why do they have to have something other than what my dog would?
Well, I mean, you've got to do that, you've got to have to, they've got to train.
Oh, bet, training, yeah.
Yeah. Bet deals, they have to go to a vet on a regular schedule, they have to maintain a body weight. There's all kinds of.
It's a, it's a great PR thing. I mean, you love the, they, they sprinkle the kids love it, and they love it, and everybody just thinks it's wonderful.
I love that.
Part of it is great. But for the actual.
And the cost wise.
How much, how much is it going to save us? I don't, I wouldn't.
Well, does it, kind of like Pharaoh's question earlier, does it send a message to all?
Yes, but I'm, that's all. We're really happy.
Now it's a bit, we're not going to have to sit and wait for the county to get here, we have our own dog.
Yeah, but what, what your car is on vacation, and you can't, you can't leave that dog with somebody else while you're out of town.
Well, because that was going to be my other question, is one going to be sufficient?
Well, you have to.
You have to have the one.
That's not, if you have just one, it's enough.
You have to have it somewhere.
I mean, if you're talking about handler being gone, I mean, that's just something off the top of my mind.
Well, that's, that's the other thing, the dog will only work for once, whoever the handler is. And if the handler worked a 10-hour, an eight-hour shift or whatever he works, and he goes home, then you can't afford to pull him back in at 2:00 in the morning to do again.
And there is a.
Yeah. And there you go.
Does that, like, you have to schedule it around when you think.
You still have the backup of calling the sheriff's department, at least the city would have one, basically.
It sends a wonderful message.
You know, I, I listen to it, I listen to it 24 hours, you don't, you don't realize how much time that they're involved in, with calling for K-9.
I think another expense would be insurance. I think it has to be women as officers, once it's trying.
Yeah.
You also have a misperception of what the drug dogs do, too. The public has a misperception about it. There are a lot of Fourth Amendment issues that have come up in the last couple of years about the use of sniffs, dog sniffs, where you can use them, where you can't use them. I'm just not sure that there is a great benefit to a drug dog. Not when you've got others that you can, you can call on, but I'm forcing, it'd be a pleasure of the board, not.
So we're not talking about a tremendous amount of money in this budget. So I think Paul would need to leave it for its app.
Right.
And then, and that's kind of, I wouldn't suggest, though, that we look to the option of a put, if we're going to go that direction.
Absolutely.
I think that ought to be stipulated, and if we leave it in there, and it's stipulated that we're going to look at, spend more time looking at what it would cost us to get a puppy, you know, what is the availability, and we get a better projection of the cost of.
No, I totally agree. Okay, go.
And that's, any other questions on this particular budget? All right, Schedule Two, page 14. This is your streets and maintenance. Two things to note in this is under your capital outlay improvements, you have 50,000 budgeted for the Devo again this year. You also have, under Memorial Park, if you guys will remember from probably our March board meeting, there was, LT LT had approached us with possibly doing a matching grant to do some restoration work on Crawford Ranch down there. So that is why you see that increase from the 2013, 2014, this part here. Anything on this one? All right, Schedule Two, page 15. This is your PAV bill. Basically, everything is a mirror image of last year with the exception of capital outlay improvements, which 2013, 2014 was at 370,000, 2014, 2015, we're predicting 270,000. Questions on this one? Schedule Two, page 16. This is your general fund debt service, your lease purchase principal and your lease purchase interest. The total for those, for your total debt service is 163,000 for this proposed budget year. And Janet, please correct me if I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, what you have in those is at your current town hall building, that is your police, is your police department, that's the principal and interest we pay for those. Contingency, same as last year, you have 30,000 for this year. Any questions on that? All right, Schedule Three, page one, your fire department fund, your revenues, your fire tax, the same as the 2013, 2014, at 500,000. Your fund balance was decreased 5,000. It was 185,500 last year. It is down this year to 180,500. 5,000 of that went to lease purchase of the fire truck. All right, any questions on that one? All right, Schedule Three, page two. To make a couple notes, one thing that was requested in the budget message as well was the figure, if you'll notice, on your salary and wages that is increased from the previous year, is anticipation of a full-time firefighter. This would give you a total of, you currently have, let's see, three, four, you currently have four, three of which are currently on an 18-hour shift, one who is there basically on a regular schedule from 8 to 5. This would allow you for an additional member and to increase that to 24-hour shift. Another thing that you'll notice with anticipation, that you would get an additional member, your fireman fees should decrease, your fireman fees are what they're paid per call. It would be, it was at 77,000 last year with anticipation of the new position there, you should decrease, so that should decrease to around 50,000. Under other services, this was referenced in the message, also on the previous page where the 5,000 was taken, your other services is your lease payment on the fire truck at Any questions on this one? All right, Schedule Four, page one. You'll notice your utility fees, we're predicting, again, less revenue for there, just because there's a lot, it's just not happening right now. It's at 2,300,000. One thing to note as well, that was some of the requests in your expenditures, one was a vehicle, there is, with a half-time pickup truck, under your capital outlay equipment, there is 35,000 for your truck. One thing to note that the department head and I spoke about was, they had requested a full-time position. Currently, in this budget that's before you, there's just a budgeted part-time position. There is a current part-time employee who is a part-time heavy equipment operator. The public, the department head, the public works director, had expressed a need to take that part-time position and make it a full-time position. One way to justify that, and my suggestion for the board to consider, if you'll note under your capital outlay distribution lines, you're at 175,000. What you could potentially do, if it's the will of the board to make that a full-time position, you could take around 20, 20,000 to 25,000 from that and place that in your salary and wages. That would alleviate, that would take you down to 150 to 155. And what you would need to do, the stipulations that I would put on that, is that is going to allow you, if you did use your full-time person, that should allow them to start doing some smaller projects in-house without contracting those out to medical agencies. So that is one thing to consider.
Well, now, Ed, we'll have to have increases in retirement, 401K, group insurance, because that would just be the salary part. Because if you had a full-time employee, you got to pay all these expenses, and a part-time one gets that.
But there's so many projects that are around town, rather than us having to go out there and get somebody else, keep it in town and keep busy. I think that's a good idea.
Usually, when we go out, we end up paying more than what we anticipated. But I like the idea of, should do this, have, let Summer have more control on specific projects we want to get accomplished.
Right.
And I don't have any problem in doing this, as long as we're able to control some of this, make sure some of these projects get accomplished.
Some of them have been sitting at home for a while.
That's a sweet one, good.
It was my nice moment.
Thank you, George.
Anything else within this, this page? Okay, Schedule Four, page two, your utility fees, 2013, 2014, they were 935,000, 2014, 2015, they're down to around 927,500. Your expenditures, which is your lease purchase interest, is at 927,500. And again, Janet, if you were speaking correctly, to my knowledge, those expenditures are what we're paying for our sewer plant, and I believe you do have your, we're paying some still on our water plant.
Well, water, about 20,000, we're paying for your sewer plant, paying for all these capital projects that we get in the highs, across the branch, I have to do public parks buildings, all of this.
Some of the parks, all the buildings, all that.
Then you had all those projects that was done, that was about 5 million, you know, several, they was all just grouped together, there's probably at least 10 or 12.
We know how many years we have on this.
We have like 10 or 12.
Although we refinanced last year.
You've got 10 or 12 years on most of them, and you've got 20 on the sewer plant, which is a million, five million.
Yeah, that was a brand new project.
So what we've learned on that is the 20, it's 20 years.
And the lease, they're going to go down each year a little bit, so.
A lot.
The location.
Storage.
Location.
Which one are you talking about?
We were just talking about the financing and the.
At the sewer plant, all that that was done, that's in that 5 million.
Everything's in that.
And I might point out, we've never got our grant funds back, because I've asked for them, and I even have a guy, it used to be the rural center, you know, we got those 2, 500,000 grants. Well, now it's changed over to Commerce, and the state, the governor's office, the last email I got, they was reviewing it, and then once he got it back, he was reviewing my request, because you have to send in, of course, bunches of copies, so.
So that was.
That's still holding.
That was 500, or that was.
No, it may, and there's two different ones.
I bet it's been told.
I hear he's going to give that.
We've already paid.
We've already paid.
Oh, I know.
But we've not got reimbursed.
Yeah, that goes back into our funds.
Yeah, go back into it. See, we advanced it, and now we're trying to get reimbursed. But we're paying on the loan already. We paid, I just, we paid a payment in April, and then we still have another payment. See, we owe about a million dollars in debt in this fund, and we'll be paying at the very end of June another payment. They're like 300,000 or 400,000 away.
Every six months?
Well, what they do, they make you pay interest at the first part of the year, then you pay interest and the lease on the principal. See, usually you did interest and, but now these new loans, they got interest the first time. And then, I think proper arrangements is scheduled, and you just look at it and you'll see. Because it's hard to explain, but you pay your interest on one payment. Like, say it's due June 1st, you pay interest plus the principal, but then back the six months previous, you just pay interest. But I've got a schedule, I'll write those in, I'll just put them in the table.
For interest, probably.
Any other questions on this particular page?
And actually, the water plant, I should just come in here, it'll be paid off, because see, that, they got into debt in that in the mid-'70s, so that's been like a fourth year of debt. But it was like 20,000 or 30,000 years. That's no debt, I mean, really, compared to these.
I would like to say, I appreciate you're getting together with me individually. Sometimes you look at this thing and you think, okay, yeah, whatever, that you explain, you know, and I think it made this whole thing go explosive, because right about now, we're all going still on the second page, and what is this for, and what is this for? You know, so we all got individual, because we were able to ask our own individual questions, and, you know, each one had a concern for something, I'm sure.
Thank you.
So now, that we've been through this.
That's fine.
Our.
I suppose by.
Your excuse, go ahead. Folks, I would like to ask the board to consider, did we not do a one cent, but did we do a two-cent increase? For many, many years, the county and the town have bragged so much about having such a low tax rate, that we have deferred things and deferred things, to the point that I'm a little concerned right now about economic development of the town. We're seeing more and more empty buildings, and one of the problems we're seeing in these empty buildings, we're beginning to look depressed. We really are. I've just been looking here, somebody's got a million dollars' worth of property, is only going to pay 200 extra in taxes. That's less than 20 dollars a month. I really think that we all look at the two cents so that we're not so far behind, and that we're keeping our basic services up to a level that's going to be attractive for economic development. And I, I really don't have a vote on this, but I would like for the board to seriously consider the benefits of the economic development. Most, most people looking at a town are not looking at so much at the tax rate as they are the water, the sewer, the recreation, the livability of a town. And so I'm just putting it out to see if, if there's any kind of consensus, or if I'm way off base of what, but to consider the two-cent increase rather than the one cent.
Would you advise that this entire 64,000 extra that would give us would be put into things like.
Wherever they would be. This board would, would decide where the priorities are. And it would, if my calculations, Madam Nash, are correct, I think we'd only be bringing in an extra 120,000 total. And in the scheme of things, that's not a whole lot, but by golly, it is a start, and we don't know what's going to happen with the property reevaluation next year. So it may be that we want to make our move right now and build a cushion.
Well, we know we're going to have to change the rate next year.
That's right.
We've got, and asked to be changed.
But I'm not sure, Pharaoh, that we.
But we don't know how it's going to affect the seat. The county's already predicted on what their tax, their military rate's going to go up to. It's at like past reevaluations, you don't lose as much usually on property in the city as you do out in the rural areas, so it may not affect us.
Well, that should be a 25% decrease in whole valuation of the town?
27 to 35 cents, on the average, 35, 35 cents.
Let me point out something to you down there. If the property out in the county decreases by 25%, the property inside the city limits, you know, is some point less than that, and I predict it will be, when they figure the overall tax rate for the county, it's going to be figured on that average of, of the 25% drop, and that's going to cause the people in town to pay a lot more tax, because you already see the predicted rate would be 35 cents at least, you know? So if your property value stayed about the same, you're going to be paying the difference in between 27 cents and 35.
Or we can always lower the rate.
The residents are going to get shocked.
You always want?
Lower the rate, if we have to.
But lower the rate, that's not.
Yeah, you can't lower that.
That doesn't have any effect on it, it's not. You know, our tax rates, it's just based on the evaluation that the county does.
Yeah, that's right.
What, Janet, where we at this year, how much money we're going to take out of the coffers this year to balance?
Looks like we're not even breaking even so far.
Okay, but how much is that going to be?
At least 200 and something thousand, because I've run the revenues and expenses last year, and we're over on expenses compared to revenues.
Okay, you're talking about fund balance, right? 20,000 dollars in fund balance? We had appropriated last year what?
200,000.
So we're, we're pretty well on the mark with what we had.
Well, we're not, we're over, we're like 300,000 a whole, so we're, it's really hard to tell at this point, because you've got to get all your revenues in, but right now, expenses exceed revenues in the general fund. And the water fund's exceeding, but see, we spent that 200,000 for that easement, that wasn't much. And then, the fire fund, we knew we was going to decrease there because that lease payment, see, we're just getting 500,000 in taxes, with that budget, to get the lease payments out is, you know, 600 and some thousand, so that's, that's going to decrease, I know for sure. That's going to be bad. Yeah, but that's part of the. I know, but that's part of the fund balance.
Yes, that, that's hope, that's part of.
And then you've got to take out your PAV bill, so probably we might have 300,000 to 400,000. And I don't really hope we don't decrease, so that's the reason.
We can't, and we, we've got to keep it. We can't, we've got to keep it.
We've got to not.
It's not going to give us a percentage. I mean, the fire department money has been really kicking our percentage up for our fund balance.
Well, what it is, it decreased last year. We increased between the general fund and the fire department seventy thousand now. But what happened is the fire fund, which is lease payment, which you know, everybody agreed to buy those trucks, I'm not saying either there. We're getting five hundred thousand in taxes in the fire fund. But then we're taking almost two hundred thousand down each year.
So you're, you're saying.
Right now, it looks like we're going to spend out of the fund balance or we're going to maybe break even.
So, but you're, what you're saying though is once everything is said and done with this, this year's budget, we're going to have two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars left in the fund balance.
Probably, maybe it's about four hundred.
And so then you're talking about appropriating a hundred and eighty for this year's budget, so we're using it all.
That's right, well, yeah, we're really down on fund balance. We really are. And see what's happening in the fire department, like you say, it's all grouped together, but you've got to take that cap. And we've got to keep at least a hundred thousand back for that eight percent.
Well, I'm all for a tax increase. Anything to be proud of that we have the lowest tax base. When things are needed. Now, whether we want to go to two percent, but I was for one percent.
Let me.
I'm going to listen to everybody.
Let me ask, what would be the downside of a two, two-cent increase? Where's the downside?
Nobody likes the technical.
Okay, let's set that aside. Okay, we're, we're looking now.
Next year.
Do it now instead of.
At the public perception rather than what does the town need to do?
Right, and that's what they elected us for.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm willing to take the blame, let me tell you, because I, I really, I really feel strongly that the town has got to survive. And if I were, if, if it were, if we're asking for five or ten cents, but, but two cents is only going to give us a cushion, really.
This, this is a budget where, when it was looked through, it's not a typical budget where you look through and look at ways to save, therefore, some of the things that were asked for didn't get funded. This year, this is a budget that things didn't get funded because there's no money.
There's no money, that's right. Well, think about that.
I, I agree with you, Bob, I think that might be.
But the best possible thing is when we get in some more revenue from the state, we may break even. If we do, you know, the same, we won't be taking that two hundred thousand.
Basically already lost.
Because last year, we increased seventy thousand, so hopefully we'll increase enough.
How long has the state noticed this thing?
Well, I mean, we asked for it, I mean, they voted since we spent it, but I mean, we've got a new governor in there, they've changed all those. Rural Center no longer exists like it did. All these grants that we got, we've had these grants for four or five years. Now it's the commerce, something commerce.
Department of Commerce.
And I mean, you know, there's no way we can control that.
We're also facing the, the state wanting towns to take over some road maintenance. In the high of the world, we do that.
But that will have the fund balances, this is out of the water fund. That one, that million dollars were being retained earnings.
It's still money.
Well, I know, but I'm saying you can't really use it for taxes.
Well, that's something I, I, we can't take the vote on, but I did want to throw it out to see, and, and I think there is some, there is some feeling both ways and, and we need to weigh them. One other thing, at the June meeting, I'd like to call for a, a quick close session if, if there's no objection to it. We'll put that on the agenda. What else do we have we want to talk about? As long as we don't vote, I think we can talk about.
I'm sure we can talk.
Well, let's, let's talk about the, the tax, the taxes, tax rate and stuff still. I'm still kind of hung up on that. You know, if the county goes from twenty-seven to thirty-five, we're going to go from twenty-six to thirty-one or thirty-two. So next year, we can't reduce our taxes, we've got to increase them.
The millage.
Yeah, the millage rate. So we're looking at a, a four or five cent just to be exactly where we was this year.
Well, and if we, if, if it's anybody's idea that we need to do a two cent, if the board agrees, we don't need to spend it. We don't need to budget.
That's right.
And we, it needs to be.
But in there, left there.
And left there, because if we start saying, oh, we got sixty thousand dollars, let's find something else to spend it on, we're just backing up.
You're right, you're absolutely, but we don't have that sixty thousand now.
That's right.
If we need.
That's right, so we, we, we can't, we can't start adding.
You can, you can anticipate our fund balance is going to drop. For the next couple of years, it's going to drop two hundred thousand a year just on the fire department lease. Because that money that was in the fund balance for the fire department that comes from the county fire tax is already earmarked. So that, that balance is going to be down and that, that affects our overall percentage of the town.
That needs to be broken down. We don't ever need to say, what's the fund balance? And somebody says four hundred thousand dollars, but then fails to say that three hundred thousand dollars of that allowance.
No, I was trying to.
Yeah, you know, that's.
So we really have to take a look at that because our fund balance is, it's always looked like it's, we've had a great percentage ratio. But at that time, that was seven, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand, it was actually earmarked. The fire department is not part of it.
Then you got to take out that pound bill fund.
Yes.
There's a lot that you got to take out.
If they need something on that, that, that needs to come through the tax rate that the fire department had. We don't need to get that mixed up with, with our stuff, it's too complicated as it goes out.
Fair enough, could you explain something to me? Let's say the revaluation comes in and the town of Franklin stays whole, close to where they are now.
Yes.
Well, and we know the county tax rate will have to go up because they're flipping the whole county. But why would our tax rate have to go up if the evaluations?
Well, we're, we're just saying that where it would affect, maybe.
The tax rate.
The hundred percent increase to county, we may not see but sixty percent. So it's still, we're still going to have to balance our budget based on that. I mean, the valuation is going to drop in the city, just not, not, we don't feel as much as what the county is, which would still require increasing taxes just to balance it.
That's what I was going to say. So we, I mean, we, we don't have a weight decision.
Yeah. Well, the actually, the dollar may not know that, you know, typically the property owners, you know, may, may stay the same, but the rate would be changing because of all the profit that went down.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, it still would be, it could affect, the town residents could be affected a lot more than the county residents would be. And then the town residents are probably going to have to pay a higher percentage of taxes than what the county does. Yeah, the county level, so they're really going to be taxed next year. So it could, it could have a, a real negative effect on, on people that live in the city.
Well, they had went to a four-year revaluation and then when the, when everything started, the economy got so bad, they went back to the eight. See, we should have had this revaluation several years ago. And then at that time, it really had decreased, I thought, so they postponed it to next year.
Well, I guess for, for sake of argument, it wouldn't take much, Summer, just to leave this one at is at one cent and do another one at two cents, would it? Because really, the only thing you're going to be adjusting is what money we're giving in through taxes. And that'll only be about a sixty-four thousand dollar increase in something, so.
It just removed, it just removed the amount of money we'd have to remove from the fund balance. It's always one, it's always one thing. It's your add-on or take.
But under the, the difference column there, the, what you put, the difference you pay, I would have to multiply it by two. And if, I, I feel like it'll be no more difficult to persuade the public to go two cents than it will be one. When you're not talking about that much, but what would it mean to the town? That's what I think the bottom line is. I worry that we've only got a contingency of thirty thousand dollars.
That's just to say you've been mending the budget.
I know.
But you don't want to mend the budget, you don't really.
No, but I mean.
What if something happened?
What if something?
Well, then we, we, we can mend the budget, we'll take it out of the fund.
But that contingency for like little, small things.
I know.
You're actually supposed to keep under your expenses.
What bothers me so much are things that we used to depend on the state to partner with us on, are gone.
We all, all concerned about that.
It's, it's scary to me. Region A is, is feeling it, we're all feeling it. We're charged with now because of all the cutbacks and the private partnerships that we used to see are disappearing.
We can work on this.
We need to work on private partnerships in the town, we really do, we really do. Well, anyhow, threw, threw some ideas out there and I, I don't know, there may be more questions, but I want to mention one thing. Chad, welcome. Glad you're here and such an exciting Saturday morning.
See, this is why we get the big bucks. This is why we get the big bucks.
That's right, and I want to, I want to echo what Joyce said.
Oh, my, wait a minute.
I've been on the, just a minute, don't be nice to you.
Oh, okay. Attention, wait.
I've been on board for ten years and I have come to some of these budget workshops and they say, there it is, and we went home. And this, Janet and Summer, this was great. I, I really think so. Who's got something else?
I have to add that.
Oh, Summer does, yeah.
If you don't mind, just kind of recap before we need to go into the coming weeks. So let me just make sure I've understood what's, if Janet and I can direct to have you guys revise budget. The changes that you would like to, to make, one that I noted was the lease purchase for the police. You'd like me to pursue that to see if that is a possibility, the thirty-six thousand that we currently have budgeted. Okay? The K nine, we're going to leave that in there, let, let us do a little bit more research to see what we can do if we want to start that foundation and what we could run into. The full-time public works employee, I would move that from the capital outlay distribution lines with the hopes of starting to take in those smaller projects, doing them in-house and making that part-time salary into a full-time salary. And then the tax increase, would you like us to figure that at the two percent? Or, excuse me, a two cents. Let me retract. Yes, all right. So what we'll do, go ahead.
I'd clarify, this full-time employee is going to be in water, right?
Yes, yes.
And then you want me to figure out fringes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be more than twenty-seven thousand, okay? Yeah, it's water, it's what I'm saying.
And the James.
Yeah. Yeah, the backhaul operators is all water.
So what we will do in the meantime, it's, it's to the will of the board, if you're comfortable with what we've done here today. Moving forward, we could just, we'll make the changes. This will be in your proposed agenda packet for your June second meeting because we will have our public hearing. That is opportunity for the public to come, sign up. They'll have a chance to look at the corrected budget that we are now proposing. The meeting's at seven oh five, or if you guys are not comfortable pursuing that avenue, if you want to set up another work session, I'm open to do that. You just direct me what you'd like to do.
I feel more comfortable than I ever have, including the times that I spent reporting.
And now the water fund, we're not increasing that total, but we want to take it out of that.
Right.
Right.
See, I even know what you mean when you say that.
I think, I think we've got a good, good budget plan and we've also got some ideas on things we need to look at next year as possibilities of reducing some of our costs.
All right, is anything else? Real quick, like, we can't vote on anything, but has anybody got anything they want to throw out right now? Anything about the town?
Well, what's wrong with?
It's Saturday morning and we got.
Joyce?
It's been raining guns.
Is it going to rain again?
Yeah, it's supposed to rain by, by tonight again.
I'm going to get you two tea parties, yeah.
You want to come help make tea sandwiches?
What about the pickleball?
Okay, my biggest thing, Bob, right at this point, and I did not open, I didn't get home from five o'clock yesterday morning until nine-thirty last night. Just kept going. So I looked, so I didn't even, I didn't think I would even understand it if I clicked on it and read what it was. But about the tennis court, I think we need to leave Memorial Park alone until the, the job court is done, whatever they're going to do. Whether they're going to end up being big trucks in there, we don't know for sure what's going to be coming in there. So if we start fixing up a tennis court and then they end up messing it up, yeah, we want to give them full access to, to me, everything they need to fix that situation. And then after that, yeah, let's go with whatever's going to get the most use out of Memorial Park.
And I like Patty's idea of doing, sitting down and doing some kind of planning for what, where we want that part to go.
Right, right. Absolutely.
Summer, you had something?
Yes, I was going to let, let you both know, I have, we're going to look at, at least if nothing else, there's no direct expense of pressure washing. I've, I've spoken with Warren Cave and the fire department's willing to come. They were going yesterday, but despite the little storm that come through, they did not pressure wash. They're going to pressure wash the courts and then, Joyce, we have a meeting with Mr. West on Thursday to see if they can use the court as is. We will clean it up in the house. I think that's very good.
And the fire department has always come out there and, and used the pressure wash, the whole building and everything. Because somebody's taking mud, maybe on the side of the building and everything. Except you always got the poof, so, but.
Okay. Anything else from anybody?
Thank you. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity.
It was just great, yeah. All right, everybody have a good weekend, what's left, I mean?
Thanks, Bob.
It was, it was a. I'm going to get baby. I just wanted to tell y'all how much I enjoy running your Saturday morning.
Thank you, Bob.
All in favor of a journey?
Of our morning meeting?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.